This is a clock. The special meeting of the Planning Commission is being held with some members physically present at the Civic Center and some participating electronically as provided under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3708.2, subsection A3, which permits public bodies to meet by electronic communications without a quorum physically assembled at one location since on March 12th, 2020, Governor Northern declared a state of emergency for the Commonwealth of Virginia arising from the novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. The purpose of this meeting is for, one, public input to potential rezoning of concrete plant expansion; two, further rezoning of 303 and 309 Jefferson Avenue; three, concurrence on use of miniature golf in zoning District C3; and four, comprehensive plan update discussion. An audio recording is being made of this meeting. This meeting is also being livestreamed on Facebook as well as being videotaped for viewing from the town's website after processing. Public comments will be accepted this evening via Facebook Live and emails to planner@capecharles.org. Comments were also solicited to be emailed to the clerk, planner, and planning technician prior to the meeting. All votes taken this evening will be by roll call vote and recorded in the minutes. Any commission members who leave the meeting or arrive after start of the meeting must verbally note their attendance. Only essential business of the town of Cape Charles could be done in this manner. These procedures will remain in effect until COVID-19 crisis has been alleviated. Do any of the commission members have any questions about this process? Right?
No.
If not, the Planning Commission Special Meeting Cape Charles, the Electronic Communications, February 2nd, 2021 is called to order. Roll call, please. Sue present. Grossman present.
Holloway present.
McCoy here. Diane, you're on mute.
Okay, I'm here.
All right. We have a form established at this time. Public comments, read the agenda items only. Public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do bear with me because we have a few.
Okay.
Okay, this is from David J. Parham at gmail.com. Dear Honorable Commissioners, I am writing to request your support in addressing the growing noise and air pollution problems from the Coastal Precast Concrete Plant, CPC. As a resident of Cape Charles, I am voicing my concerns over the damage to the town this plant's operation is causing. The town has experienced a revitalization of its economy largely due to expanded tourist industry and relocated retirees who appreciate the historic fabric peaceful, quiet qualities of the town beach and marina. However, since March 2020, the operation of the Coastal Precast Concrete Plant has greatly damaged these qualities, which made Cape Charles a destination and will negatively hurt the long-term economic growth of the town going forward. The noise and air pollution from the plant is a large annoyance and major health concern to residents and renters. The dust from the plant can cause serious health issues to residents and renters and is damaging to boats and the marina, not to mention possible chemicals which could be carried into the harbor. The noise, while greatly upsetting, the peace and serenity of the town also presents health concerns to our residents. My request to the commission is twofold. First, that the light industrial zoning requirements for the Coastal Precast Concrete Plant are enforced and actions are taken to reduce the noise and air pollution emitted from the plant to acceptable levels at acceptable times. Secondly, that the commission does not endorse or approve any expanded or new industrial zoning of any kind in the town limits or surrounding environs. As the plant in its current configuration is greatly damaging the town we love, no planned expansion or new industrial zoning should be permitted as that would further damage the town and its economic future. I believe that the commission has always believed and taken action to revitalize the economy of the town through expanded tourism and strongly agree that the economic benefits of a robust tourism industry and a vibrant active group of residents supporting the local businesses and real estate market for outweighs the income from the Precast Concrete Plant. I respectfully request your consideration and support of this position. Best regards and stay safe. David J. Parham, 8 Bay Avenue. To all, I have written previously and cited cogent town articles and ordinances. I will not repeat here. I do have specific requests for the town officials to consider for the next town meeting scheduled for the 2nd of February. One, do not rezone or amend any existing area from residential or commercial to heavy or light industry. Two, do not rezone light industry areas to heavy industry areas. Three, do not rezone any other lands not mentioned above to light or heavy industry areas. Four, do not expand the current designated land area of the industrial park. Thank you. Margaret and Scott Gorse, 205 Madison Avenue. Dear Members of the Town of Cape Charles, please do not sell or rezone any more property for heavy industry or for the use of Precast. For the past several months... Sorry, I had a message popping up. Let's see. For the past several months, my concerns about the cement plant have been dismissed when mentioned to town officials. As these concerns are becoming ever more paramount, please don't tell me again that the cement plant was already there when I moved here four years ago. So now I just have to put up and shut up. Yes, Bay Shore was there when I bought the house, but it was barely operating. Yes, I was aware of it and asked about it, but I was assured the harbor area was not going to be expanding Marina Services and would become more attractive for visitors, not become an industrial site. So let me describe what has changed for me since the arrival of Precast. One, the rumblings and vibrations. My house was built in 1921. In the past 100 years, it had settled. During the first three years of our living in it, there were no indications that it was settling further. In 2020, that changed. There are nowadays of continuous vibrations during the loading and unloading of boulders at Precast. The result is that we have new cracks in the house as well as floor slanting and doors not closing. Further, the old addition at the back is pulling away from the mainframe of the house. Could I prove a direct correlation? With the help of engineers, yes. It is obvious, yes. If I can feel the vibrations from Precast throughout the house, with the vibrations causing damage to the foundation, yes, of course. Consequence, I'm in the midst of making arrangements for a full two-story extension to the back of the house. I've worked with a wonderful architect, Leon Parm, and look forward to working with an excellent, excellent local contractor, Scott Sims. I paid for the drawings, a survey, and for a building permit, so I'm ready to start. What would you do? Two, the noise. I know that many residents of the historic district are complaining about the time consistency and the effects of the endless noise from the plant. I don't think I need to reiterate their complaints or arguments. They all apply to me and to my house. Simply add my name to their list. Three, dust. Cement dust is clearly a health threat. Clouds can be seen rolling towards the historic district. Soot is wiped from the porch. Plants are being washed with it and our lungs. The board, four, the boardwalk through the nature reserve was the perfect distance for a healthy walk and a daylight. Sadly, the plant has expanded to within feet of the railings. It is destroyed. I don't expect closure of Precast. I do hope, however, the town will not compound one mistake with another. Please do not rezone so Precast can expand. Thank you. Mary Barrow, 206 Monroe Avenue. This one's from Phil Gekin. I hope I'm pronouncing the last name correctly. 602 Jefferson Avenue. To Chairman Stram and members of the Cape Charles Planning Commission. Background and Issues. I have lived with my wife at 602 Jefferson Avenue in Cape Charles since June of 2015. Prior to that time, we lived for six months in Bay Creek. One of the primary reasons we moved to Cape Charles was its incredible natural beauty, including the Chesapeake Bay, its vast wildlife, and other natural areas. During this time, I have been generally supportive of the activities of Bay Shore Concrete Products. However, since the new owners Coastal Precast Systems have taken operation, I have become quite disturbed, especially from the standpoint of pollution and the, sorry, degradation of Cape Charles' natural assets, resources, and environment. Not only has the viewshed of our natural resources been adversely affected by CPS' development, sound and air pollution has put these precious assets at serious risk. Just make a visit to the Cape Charles Natural Area Preserve, take a walk along the beach, or take a ride in a boat in the harbor out into the bay. Sound, air, and light pollution being generated by CPS is extensive, as stated in Section 11.5 of the current comprehensive plan. An abundance of natural resources exists in Cape Charles. Critical wildlife habitats such as wetlands, natural areas, and the public beach are present within the town's boundaries and nearby. These natural environments are delicate and should be protected from, is it degradation? Land, am I saying that right? Degradation. Land use policies must continue to take into account the importance of the local environment to protect these resources for present and future generations. The intent of the Cape Charles Master Tree Plan, an addendum to the comprehensive plan, is to develop vibrant green infrastructure in all town districts by promoting the planting of appropriate new trees and protecting appropriate existing trees. The plan's purpose is to ensure the beauty and ecological health of Cape Charles for its citizens and guests. In the last few months, CPS has cut down virtually every tree right up to the Cape Charles Natural Area Preserve property line. Tens, if not hundreds, of mature native trees have been cut down. I walk the preserve boardwalk almost every day. Now, with no buffer between CPS and the preserve, the noise, dust, and light pollution is dramatic, not only for me, but more importantly, for the plants and animals that live in this preserve. Recently, CPS has been conducting open fires that have produced smoke and ash that has further degraded the preserve. Nothing better than enjoying nature while having problems seeing and breathing. Conclusion, CPS's development and operation adds significant negative impacts on Cape Charles' natural assets and the quality of life for its citizens. As CPS continues to expand its operations on its current property, it is also planning to further expand its operation through additional land acquisitions and rezoning. I am totally against rezoning any property that CPS now owns or acquires in the future. Signed, Phil Gekin. I would like to express my concern about the proposed expansion of the physical plant as well as hours of operation. The main issues are the noise and pollution. I am so excited about the renewal of downtown. Having outdoor dining and events would be difficult with both the noise and pollution. Also, I have lung disease and my health would be directly affected. I am hoping a compromise can be reached so we can all live together. Thank you. Bonnie Malik, 304 Fig Street. This is from Jim Turner. We are residents of Cape Charles residing about one mile south of the coastal concrete operation in Bay Creek. We strongly object to any consideration zoning changes that allow expansion of that industrial operation because of the potential increase in noise and air pollution that already emanates from the plant. We purchased our property in December 2018. While the Old Bay Shore Plant was dormant and seemingly abandoned, visits to Cape Charles a number of times over the preceding two to three years never demonstrated any issues with noise or air pollution during that time. Inquiries with our real estate agent indicated no known firm plans were in place for the site, though it was for sale as an industrial site. So we plunged ahead with building our vacation retirement home. In the last 10 months since moving here, we have noticed dramatically increased noise and air pollution coming from the plant site, particularly noticeable when winds are from the north, particularly noticeable in industrial backup warning bells on heavy equipment, noise of rocks being dumped in barges, and general diesel engine noises. In addition, the last few months, there have been frequent episodes of heavy smoke and particulate matter coming from the work site. Smoke is so heavy that it interferes with breathing necessitating going inside and closing up the house. One day in mid-December, we alerted the Bay Creek Golf Shop that we thought there was a forest brush fire north of Nicholas Golf Course. After investigation by the course superintendent, we were assured it was simply coming from coastal concrete. We appreciate the importance of job-producing businesses in the community, but don't think we should have to constantly have our quality of life impacted. Living nearly a mile away, we are also concerned about the health impact of the air pollution as well as protecting the environs of downtown Cape Charles. Finally, the, the, the second, sorry. Finally, the successful, successful development of Bay Creek in and around the Nicholas Golf Course is threatened by the consequences of coastal concrete's operation. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input to the Planning Commission. James and Nancy Turner, 518 Wallbridge Bend. Mr. Ballard, you'll be reading your comments, correct?
Bill, you're on mute.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yes, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That is all I have, Mr. Care. Bill Youngrich.
Thank you, Tracy. Are there any other public comments? Understanding that we have a public input to potential rezoning of concrete plant expansion in the special meeting order. Are there any other comments?
Yeah.
Bill, I have some.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Ballard?
I'm not Margaret, by the way. What's your answer?
Excuse me, Bill, do we want to, do we want to wait for their comments for the input? Because they're our presenters.
I just said, I, I just, I just said, are there any other comments other than the public input to potential rezoning of the concrete plant expansion, which we're going to go into next? And they just both said, no. So, go ahead.
So this is, I'm sorry, I don't know the protocol, but this is in regard to the concrete expansion, so plant expansion, so, okay.
Okay, well, then, is yours, Marley, is yours in, in, in regard to concrete expansion, too?
Yeah, Bill, it is, thank you.
Okay, all right. So we have no other public comments on the agenda items other than, and we'll, correct? All right. I'll make a motion that we close the public comments, then. Do we have a motion on it forward? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Diane seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Aye.
I'm sorry, you got to all say, this has to go by roll call vote. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Roll call vote, you have to go by your name.
McCoy says yes.
Grossman, yes.
Butta, yes.
Yamako, yes.
Strobe, yes.
Holloway, yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, special meeting order of business. A, public input to potential rezoning of concrete plant extension. So it's my understanding that Mr. Ballard and Ms. Pickren have comments to, to talk about here. So this is public input, so go ahead, Mr. Ballard.
All right, thank you. My name is Bill Ballard. I live at 115 Mason Avenue, number 302. My wife Margaret and I are members of Grassroots Group, Concerned Citizens of Cape Charles. Concerned part of the name comes from our unease about certain issues that we feel threaten Cape Charles if it exists today. We're concerned that should these issues go unaddressed and unresolved, the town, its small businesses, its citizens, and its property owners suffer. In March 1996, almost exactly 25 years ago, this Planning Commission issued a report from John Milnor Associates outlining the state of the town of Cape Charles, outlining proposed plans to bring it back from what it described as decades of a wide design. The report clearly and strongly recommended the town adopt a focus on protection and preservation of existing properties and an emphasis on tourism as a means to reverse this decline and spur economic growth. It appears this plan has been used as a template for several other actions adopted by the town and is included in the 19, excuse me, 2019 comprehensive update. It also appears the town's decision to embrace the recommendations of using tourism as a foundation for its growth has borne fruit, with Cape Charles enjoying the benefits of higher real estate taxes and sales taxes, and the increase in successful small businesses and growing population. Briefly, the report outlined four approaches and their consequences. First was no change. It envisioned the future of a depressed economy and a little increase in economic activity resulting in loss of historic buildings, degradation of streets gate, and a diminishing of community care. The second proposed a concerted promotion of tourism. It suggested this approach would result in increased interest in town properties as second homes and increase in work activity. The third approach included the development of what has become Bay Creek. This would force the additional tourism activity, increased commercial activities, and rural values. Finally, the fourth alternative included a sustainable development, industrial or intent on preservation, enhancement, and compatible use of the town's natural and cultural resource. The issues that I alluded to earlier are noise and dust generated by coastal Precast System. These two issues, along with some other minor problems, adverse, excuse me, other problems, adversely impact the lifestyles and livelihoods of those who live and work in Cape Charles and are not in keeping with the visions expressed by the John Milnor Plan. Thus, I'd be misunderstood, we are not calling, we're not calling for the Coastal Precast to close. I'll repeat that. We do not want the Coastal Precast closed. We recognize the importance of the plant's economic footprint in the county and in this community through jobs and adventure, real estate, and business tax. Most of us want the plant to be successful. Their success, however, should not be a defense and to the detriment of the rest of the community. It's been reported that Coastal Precast or some of its principals have an option to purchase adjacent plants to expand their operations, by understanding that the use of this land for their purposes will require rezoning. The vision, if you will, beach covers, listening to an almost continuous barrage of backup alarms, they try to relax toward the beach bay. Imagine the young family who rents a house and is awakened long before dawn by that same kind of noise. Picture the yacht owner as he or she cleans dust and grit in their boat. You think they'll return? Do you think they will recommend Cape Charles to other places to go to relax toward the Chesapeake Bay, the beauty and the shopping of the town? We appreciate Coastal Precast returning as a significant employer and for the progress they've made in some areas to address these issues. In many ways, they have shown they want to be good corporate neighbors, yet the job remains unfinished. Private citizens and the town manager have met with Coastal Precast and been well received, but now it's time for the town's elected and appointed officials to come involved. As communication is paramount to find exclusions, we've asked the town council to appoint them, which group to serve as a liaison with the plant. Well-intentioned people agree to resolve a problem usually to get solved. In addition, we demanded any rezoning be contingent on the preparation and implementation of a plan that resolves issues, noise, and dust, and any other problems identified where actions are taken. A contingency should be part of any consideration you have. Coastal Precast is successful. It's always to be even more successful. Good for them. As a part of this community, though, their success should benefit this community by jeopardy. Thank you all for...
Thank you. Ms. Pickren.
Good evening, Chairman Stram and the members of the Planning Commission. The purpose of my message is to ask you for support and action to protect the economic and lifestyle well-being of the Cape Charles residents, businesses, and visitors. My name is Molly Pickren, and my husband and I have owned the house at 501 Monroe Avenue since 2000. We're members of the Concerned Citizens Group relating to the noise, dust, and ugly landscape of the concrete plant, which I never noticed much in the previous 18 years before the plant was sold to the current owners. The Concerned Citizens Group approached the plant with a good neighbor relationship attitude last year, but unhappily, the noise and dust are still huge problems. I recently reviewed the town comprehensive plan updates from 2019, where workshops collected important data on priorities envisioned from the public. These priorities include, among other things, healthy living, economic development, economic resiliency, and concrete plant cleanup. The current state of the concrete plant's excessive noise and dust negatively impacts each one of these items, and it seems as if the plant is operating as if they were zoned heavy industrial. Here are some of the impacts I see to the comprehensive plan updates. Healthy living, it's obvious to anyone that the dust and noise generated by the plant are health hazards. Economic development, Cape Charles has made great strides in this area. The Treasurers Report from October 31st, 2020 shows great growth even considering the pandemic. I believe the continued excess noise will adversely affect the attraction and satisfaction of tourists and cause current residents to seek retirement elsewhere where there's peace and quiet. All this will certainly affect the bottom line for our businesses and for the town. We have made great progress in our growth previous to the new owners getting established at this new, at the plant. The transient occupancy tax has increased 21.9% from the previous fiscal year. Sales and use tax has a 2.2 increase. Business license tax is up 97.5%, and the harbor dockage is up 61.8% increase from the previous year. The concrete plant cleanup specified by the group... The concrete plant cleanup specified by the group for the updates, the visual impact of the plant is a big negative and the plant intends to grow. The promise by the plant to build a shielding wall to help with the noise and negative visual appeal has stalled and there is no definitive timeline on its completion. The economic resiliency, if our residents move away and tourists choose to visit elsewhere, our economic condition will certainly deteriorate and businesses will falter and close. I've worked with the Cape Charles Main Street Organization for several years and have witnessed the tremendous effort expended in partnership with the town to support and grow the town businesses, attract new businesses, enhance the sense of community pride and the quality of the local residents, and solidify our area as a valued destination for visitors. Neither tourists nor residents want to be awakened at 5:00 a.m. by the plant noise. Who wants to enjoy a cocktail outside at a local establishment overlooking the beautiful bay or in a backyard gathering and have to shout over the beeping and crashing of heavy equipment? In addition, we have already heard from some of the boaters who were in the Cape Charles harbor this past summer who say they will not come back because of the noise and the dust. I'm concerned that all the effort and progress of the town will be negated if we cannot find a solution to the adverse environmental impact of the plant. We're not asking for the plant to be shut down. The plant provides jobs and contributes to the town tax revenues. We're concerned about the quality of life for the residents and tourists, which will preserve and encourage the growth of the town. Specifically, we are asking you to support light industrial zoning only. Ensure that the plant operates consistently with their light industrial zoning requirements and pressure the plant to finish the wall the owners promised to build. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pickren. Are there any other comments in reference to potential rezoning of the concrete plant expansion? Okay, do, does, uh, does the town planning office have any comments on the potential rezoning of the concrete plant extension?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item of business is the.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um. Can I speak to Bill Ballard? Is he still on?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay, uh, so you understand that we have no actionable item that we can do anything with tonight. What, why did you think you would come tonight? What were you hoping to accomplish?
I believe that if you, if this body is to consider the rezoning and that the rezoning should be contingent upon, um, you're making the plant develop a plan and implement a plan to resolve these issues. I think it's, it's, it's the bargaining chip that exists. Now, if, if they want to expand, the only way for them to do that is for them to be able, them to get rezoning, if they want to do what I understand they need to want to do, they need to have a rezone. If you all to rezone it, I think you need to require that they address. They are very, they appear to be very successful. They are, look like they're going to be even more successful. I think that's wonderful. But I think that their success should not be at the detriment of this town and that success should also provide the funding necessary to find solutions for these problems. The technology exists, I believe, to resolve the noise issue.
So you are really giving us information tonight as opposed to expecting us to do anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the last part.
You are just giving information today to us as opposed to expecting us to do anything, right? Today.
I, I'm not familiar with the process of the planning commission. I mean, if the planning commission could decide tonight that whether it's a rezone or not, then I think that I'm, I'm giving you my, my take on this. My take is this town will suffer unless those issues are resolved. We suffer, we all suffer. We all lose value in our homes. We all see the businesses go away. We all see this, this plant, this town turn away from what it's become, something that it used to be, that is a place of decline for decades to come. It's important that you all address it now. To say private, I, as a private citizen, I've gone there. I've been well received. Mr. Hosey has gone there with me and been by himself. I want to understand, he's been well received. They appear to be, want to be good corporate citizens, but I think it is something for them, for this, this body to say, okay, if you want to be good corporate citizens and step up, resolve these issues and we'll try to work with you. If not, then, you know, you're going to be stuck with what you got.
Okay, um, Allison. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Ah. Uh, looking at Article 3 of the zoning ordinance, which is the M2 zoning, it speaks pretty clearly to dust and noise and light and everything that this group is complaining about. And I'm wondering, is that unenforceable for some reason?
Can you give me the specific section?
Yes, I can. It is, uh, Section 3, dot 13, and it is on page 39 of Article 3 of the zoning ordinance.
The statement of intent?
Uh, going down to, actually, let us go to page 41 and look at number 4, 5, and 6, and then turning the page 7, 8, and 9.
Okay, so the page. Number 4, 5, and 6, 8, additional development requirement.
Right.
No outside storage of parts, materials, fossil fuels, raw materials, or petroleum shall be permitted within the M2 district. No outside manufacturing, assembly, or servicing of products used on the property or trucks or automobiles used in conjunction with or for the transport of materials within the district shall be allowed. Any exterior lighting property shall be restricted down and away from any areas of our residential or PUD where residential is a permitted use. To prevent the person or believing of light on the developed portion of the property. Is, also. Or 6, you're concerned. So, uh, I would need to know.
And 7, 8, and 9 also.
Okay. 7, no outside loudspeakers, intercoms, sirens, paging systems, whistles, horns, bells, or other devices designed to or which transmit a warning message or other communication or signal audible outside any building shall be allowed on the property. No equipment used outdoors excluding half-ton trucks shall be equipped with or use any device to emit a warning noise or audible signal while in use on the property. 8 is no dust, smoke, or noxious odor shall be released from any structure, building, or equipment used on the property. 9 is no delivery or transmission of materials of products shall be permitted to or from the property by truck or rail before 8:00 a.m. and after 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and no such deliveries to or from the property by rail or truck, including half-ton trucks, shall occur on Sunday. Uh, so what I don't know at this moment to answer your question is if this was in effect, this ordinance was in effect at the time that the concrete plant went into business because they have certain rights as a non-conforming use to continue the, the use as it was um, at the time that they went into business, assuming that it, it was legal at the time that, um, that it was, uh, it first went into business or, or some time thereafter.
This is zone M2, so I'm not sure what you're saying because that allows a concrete plant. So at the time, this second company would have bought the plant from the first company. They had a buy right to have a concrete plant, so it wasn't any kind of conditional use or grandfather.
Um, actually, I've been, I've been in this exact situation before, different type of use. Um, and it, the question was, which one applies? Is it the current one because it is now a use by right and so you have to follow certain criteria? Or was it the previous? Um, and I still say that there are certain, uh, because uh, unless this ordinance remained the same, um, and this is the ordinance that they, they developed under, that whatever ordinance was in effect at the time that they went into business is the or, is the zoning ordinance that I need to look at.
At the time which went into business?
At the time that the concrete plant went into business. It, it wouldn't be fair for a business to, to go into business, you know, be constructed, go into business, and then all of a sudden, there are additional requirements put upon them so they wouldn't be able to do the use that they were allowed to do at, at, at some point. So I would need to go back and do research and look at the zoning ordinance from that time period when they were first established.
Would that be true with the tree preservation plan also?
Can you clarify?
Well, the.
Before we get on to another topic, let me ask one question. It, it may be implicit in your mind, but it's not implicit in the conversation. When you talk about, when they first started business, are you talking about first starting Bay Shore Concrete or first starting or, or, uh, the transfer of ownership to precast?
I'm talking about the use. So no matter.
I understand. I understand, but what, what reference in time are you talking about?
Whenever they were established.
They being whom?
The use that is presently on the property.
So you're talking about when Bay Shore Concrete was started?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm talking about the use.
That's fine. That's okay. That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
All right, so the tree preservation plan talks about not cutting down large swathes of trees um, for development without some sort of approval. I don't, I've just, I too have been on that trail and I see that the trees have been knocked down and burned. Um, so would that not apply to this group? Are you saying that would also be the same thing? And that's a question for Allison.
Yeah, I'm thinking it through.
Okay.
Uh, I would just need to think about that.
Because if we could come to an agreement on these things that they are, uh, required to meet these restrictions, well, then there should be no problem. They should be enforced and the problem vanishes. Then, if they do come to us with a new zoning request of some other land, um, we look at it in terms of what the zoning ordinance says for the new zoning and decide whether or not, you know, what's appropriate for that land. So I just feel like perhaps, uh, we need the staff to really look a little deeper into this and see if we can handle it that way.
I'm not saying that this. What is the current ordinance? Doesn't, why? Uh, I, I am saying that you can't severely restrict a use that was once allowed so severely that it, it, you cannot, um, that, that you would force them out of business. So, um, what I can do is ask for town attorney's opinion or, yeah, their opinion on it, um, which of course the zoning administrator would have to give the final determination on.
And do we know who the zoning administrator will be?
No, not at this point.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
Bill, I, I had one question of Ms. Pickren and Mr. Ballard. Um, and I heard in, in another letter, this is, in your opinion, not zoned heavy industry. Is that correct?
I understood it was zoned light industrial.
Well, I, I'd like you to provide me information because I've looked at this and I don't come to that conclusion. So if you, if I'm wrong, I'd like you to point that out because I keep hearing those through comments and letters and I'd like to be definitive in what this is currently zoned as.
Would you like me to answer that?
Go ahead.
Uh, it is zoned M2 heavy industrial. The.
Yeah, which, which, which parcel are you first talking about? Are you talking about that which they currently occupy or that which they want to buy?
We're not talking about what they want to buy.
All right.
Have, um, any formal comment on, uh, we don't have an application for rezoning, so there's no formal comment on, um, anything that they may potentially want to buy. I don't have information about that for you tonight, but what they currently are on, I can answer that question and, um, that is M2. Um, heavy, heavy industrial. It's a use by right in M2.
Okay, well, I'm confused. And why are you all considering rezoning in this meeting?
There is not a rezoning request. There's no application that has been submitted to the town um, for any, uh, rezoning for expansion of a concrete plant.
Let me.
Gentlemen, go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
Let me answer this, okay? It says, "Public input to potential rezoning of the concrete plant extension." And I got, I got questions too from various residents saying, "Where's the proposal?" And so I had to go to the town and there has, like the Miss Fenchem has said, there has not been anything from, uh, coastal precast systems submitted to the town. There was a group of people that wanted to speak to the commissioners on this item and that's, and we're here to listen.
Thank you very much.
That's all, that's all we know.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on?
May I make a, may I make one little quick comment? It, it, I think it is still remain that, that there's noise, dust, flash pollution generated from the existing plant, regardless of what it's found. Um, and that noise and dust and pollution, uh, is derogatory to this town. It is, it is detrimental to the town. And so I think that, that, that regardless of where, where you all are in that process, it is an issue that should be under consideration for all of you.
And I believe that that was, that was brought out between Ms. Yamako and, uh, the town planning office here on, among the zoning ordinance. All right. Okay, any other questions on item A, 4A? Right, item 4B. Future rezoning of 303 and 309 Jefferson Avenue. All right, so, um, you all saw your, uh, your, uh, planning, your zoning, uh.
The attachments and the, yes, right, right.
Attachments, all right?
Yep.
So, uh, what, what we have here really is, we have. we have a current structure there. And it's been there for a long time. And they want to reconfigure it on the inside and some little, and some minor stuff on the outside. But the big thing is the next door. So the owner of that owns both properties. The, the current building there is zone, I guess is zone commercial by right.
But conditional use, I think.
But the, the parcel next to it where they want to do the drive-through is zoned residential.
Would you like to give a comment on it?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
An application for rezoning that came to us pertaining to what is being called Suzie's custard. And they, there are two parcels. It used to be a non-conforming barber shop right in the middle of the residential district at the corner of Strawberry and Jefferson. And my understanding is at one point it became some type of eating establishment. And so even though it's zoned residential, R1, it is, it is a non-conforming use. The issue came to me because they want to expand the non-conforming use. They have two parcels. There is a church right next to, there's the, the, the structure. And then there's a vacant lot. And then there's a church right next to that on Jefferson. And so they consolidated the two lots as of today. They consolidated the two lots that they own. And they want to put a drive-through golf cart access for the custard. And they also want to have a large areas, as you can see on their little layout, for outdoor seating. That is the expansion of a use and you can't just expand a non-conforming use without going through a rezoning process. So what they're asking for is to rezone to commercial so that they can have a larger business.
They want to rezone both lots?
Yes. The use will take up both lots. Now one lot as of, they're recording it tomorrow so that it'll be one, one lot.
Allison, this is Dennis. I've got a question. Is there a buffer required between a residential zone property and a commercial zone property? Because the church is by right in residential, correct?
That is correct. It's, well, let me double check that.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah. Do your process.
This is not the, while I'm looking, this is not the, the public hearing for this. The, it's my understanding that the town council did move this to the planning commission and said to set up a public hearing. So next month you will be hearing this in a public hearing. And so let's see, in the, there's a couple of choices for rezoning. This is the C1 district allows it as a use. Sometimes there is a buffer. That's why I'm looking. But I can get back to you.
The thing, Allison. Yep. The other thing is there may be a concern, and this is up to the church to raise it, about hours of operation when they would normally have services. And what are they going to do about noise mitigation or whatever, you know, disruptions they perceive would come about as a result of this?
Right. So they could certainly proffer those issues.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, could I say something?
Sure. Go ahead, Mike.
Allison, didn't, wasn't it said that that lot was just recently sold to the person to put with the lot that she has, right?
They purchased both lots.
Right. Well, so there was nothing in the purchase transaction that indicated there was any buffer or any kind of constraints to the purchase of that property, correct? I mean, they could build a home on it right now without any problems right next to the church.
They can do what is allowed in that zoning district, which is R1, or they can continue a non-conforming use as it's established, as long as there's been no lapse of two years.
Okay. And the other thing, point two is, I've resided here now 10 and a half years. Never once have I ever seen anybody enter or exit that church building. I see the sign out front and everything like that. So maybe they have services that I just missed, but.
Understood, Mike. I'm just, I'm just raising a possibility. Nothing more than that. Yeah. I just want to make sure we give everybody a chance to voice their concerns whenever stuff like this comes up. That's all.
Yeah. And it's quite possible that there is a buffer between, and if there is not a requirement for a buffer, then certainly it's something that could be discussed. But please remember that the, typically it's staff that works with the applicant that, that the planning commission, North Town Council can request this. It's not a conditional use permit. This is a rezoning.
Yep. Got it.
I believe the lot with the building on it was a conditional use. And went to the board of zoning appeals and has restrictions on it as to hours and a couple of other things. So how, I'm not sure how we get rid of that and rezone. Plus, it would be important to know which rezon. Do they want C1? Is that what we're looking at?
I'm sorry?
They need to resolve the piece of property they bought. The building and the old, and that other lot, that's all set. There's no problem with that.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Say you want the whole thing rezoned, both pieces rezoned as one?
Well, it, it is an expansion of the use. So I suppose that you could say that you could do a split zoning and allow the continuation of a non-conforming use in the existing structure and just rezone a portion of the property. You could do that.
I think, I, I think maybe we need to talk to the applicant again and find out exactly what it is they want to do. I'm not necessarily saying we should keep the non-conforming use. I may be thinking we should go to rezoning, but I don't see how we can do it without knowing what the restrictions on the conditional use were. Also, I happened to go buy the property today and they're already clearing the parking lot area that they're showing to the right.
Yeah, I did give them permission to do specific work that I did not believe was part of an expansion. I did talk to them about potentially not having that outdoor seating, just having the drive-up window and just using the, the structure and continuing that non-conforming use. That certainly would be easier than trying to get a rezon, a spot zoning in the middle of the residential when the intent of that residential district specifically says no commercial use. So it is going to be problematic, but the applicant wants to expand the use enough that they try to get a zoning.
So I guess, what are you looking for tonight? Are you looking for permission to hold a joint meeting? And have all the necessary packaged material presented to us at that time? Because right now we've got these two sheets.
Yeah. So there's two issues. One is that the, my understanding is that there was a process that the planning commission typically followed where the staff brought to you an application so that the planning commission could say, set up a public hearing. But what the zoning ordinance actually says is that it is the town council that does that. So the town manager reached out to the town council to try to get approval to move it to, to the planning commission to set up the public hearing. And so that's what has occurred so far. And really, I put it on the agenda for, just to try to follow the historical process, even though the zoning ordinance doesn't say that that's the process to follow. But I put it on there anyway, just at least so that you would know that there is a, a public hearing that's being established next month for this. And to give you a little information, a little background on, on what is happening to try to keep moving.
So we would expect like a staff report with the application and all the plat and all that stuff at that particular time at the joint hearing?
That's exactly right. I mean, that's what I'm used to in every other place I've worked is the staff report comes to you during the public hearing. Yes.
Okay. And just as you had mentioned, we were used to getting a lot more material to set the meeting. So I don't mind, I don't mind where we are on this particular one. I just want to know when we get the final package, all the material will be flushed out, questions answered, like the buffer and likewise.
To go ahead and the planning commission has 100 days to make a decision. The town council has a year to make the decision. But the planning commission is under a very short timeframe to, to decide this. And sometimes it's helpful to go ahead and have the public hearings so that if there are concerns from adjoining properties or other people that live in the community, then, then you know about them. And staff can work on any concerns that might arise from citizens that we may not know if we don't go ahead and hold the public hearing.
I'm a little concerned because very shortly we will have no staff in that department except Tracy, who we all love, but she doesn't really have the background. So I'm nervous about the next meeting.
Yeah, as I've, I've offered to the town to, to continue with some services to the town. So I, I want to make sure that some of these issues, especially the applications that have to follow a specific process. And we have to make sure that they follow for due, due process issues are, are processed and processed correctly. So, so I'm, I'll be speaking to the town manager about, about that.
So we don't know that that's happening or not. Is that what you're saying?
As of this point, it's not, but, but I'm not leaving till the end of the week.
Thank you for your continued support, Allison, and really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. So, so I guess if I, what I hear is we don't need to take a roll call vote on moving this to March for.
Bill, could I make a comment? Based on what you'd said, Allison, as I look at this very elementary drawing, granted, you're saying this is R1, but based on what I'm seeing in terms of the square footage of this property, I don't know how this could be R1 if this is what they're planning on using it for. Because the parking cart area as well as the picnic tables that would be for this eating establishment are probably a good two-thirds of that parcel. In which case it is not residential.
So the use that is on it is a non-conforming use. It is commercial use, but the property.
The property, the residential.
I disagree. I agree that the building is a conditional use, non-conforming use. But the property to the right was zoned residential. It is not a non-conforming use because it's never been used for this purpose.
That, that's actually correct. It hasn't been used. You're not allowed to expand a non-conforming use. And so they have to, they have a choice. They can either rezone so that it is commercial. It's a commercial, it's a commercial zoned piece of property and they can have a commercial use on it by right. Or they have to keep the same footprint and continue the use without expanding it to other parts of the, in any other area surrounding it, whether it's on their property or an adjacent property. They're not allowed to expand the use. But the way zoning works is if you go to our zoning map, which is online, you can see that, that this property is zoned residential along with all the properties around it. The reason that I'm saying it's a non-conforming use is because it's not used for residential purposes. The uses in R1 include dwellings. But this is, has been used for a barber shop and then an eating establishment. So it makes, so there's certain rights that are given to properties that created a use that is now not allowed in the zoning ordinance. And if they were established legally. So the barber shop has been there for a long time. It probably predates zoning. And it is, it's a non-conforming commercial use. So they have that right to continue as long as it doesn't expand or as it, as long as it doesn't create a, a non-conforming use that is, that, that is more problematic. They have certain rights under our non-conforming use regulations. Unfortunately, they do want to expand. They want to go to other areas of this residential property. And, and by zoning, you can't just do that. It may affect surrounding neighbors. If all of a sudden they see a, a lot of people sitting there with their custard and having a commercial use right across the street from them or adjacent to them. So, so the process, the process is to see if they can rezone this prop, this residential property to commercial.
We have to keep in mind also that a block down the way is another little old store. I could see somebody asking that to be rezoned to commercial. So, and actually in that whole area, there were movie theaters and all kinds of commercial things. So.
So, yeah. I'm not saying this is going to be an easy rezoning. There are certain things that can, that I can work with the applicant on, and I haven't started that yet to, to make it easier for planning commission and council to accept it. But that's to come.
All right. Further questions? Again, thank you, Allison, for being here. Okay. 4C. Concurrent on use of miniature golf and zoning district C3.
So in the C3 district, oh, I'm sorry, is. So in the C3 district, oh, I'm sorry, is it my turn to talk? Okay, so in the C3 zoning district, the uses that are allowed, it do not include miniature golf. So the property that this applicant, that, well, he's not an applicant yet. The property that I've been asked about is zone C3. It's on the way into town. And it's close by to other things like the brewery and the, the golf carts and different uses like that. And so that's C3. In C3, there is a section in the uses, if I can get my page, that permitted uses, it says all uses is allowed in C1 and C2. Well, that doesn't include mini golf either. So number two says any other commercial or professional use, which is compatible in nature with the allowed uses and which the zoning administrator determines to be compatible with the intent of the district and, and is concurred with by the planning commission. So as of this point, I'd like to consider it a use that is compatible, but it has to be in concurrence with all the planning commissions. So that is why this is on the agenda for that discussion and concurrence if the planning commission so, so moves.
This is Dennis. There used to be for maybe a season length of time, a miniature golf on Mason Avenue. Don't know whether or not it was, you know, allowed or not. But we've, we've been there, done that, and it has since disappeared. I don't recall anybody coming to planning commission fussing about it. Just, just history, that's all.
My only concern, well, I have several concerns. One is I don't know where the property.
Actually, a new owner of that property, that's why. That's why that miniature golf course disappeared. It's a new owner.
So Diane, if, if we decide that mini golf is allowed in C3, then it would need to be okay to be on any C3 piece of property. Now, the planning commission, I believe at least, the planning commission could say that it is a use by conditional use permit. Now, I haven't concur, I haven't gotten the town attorney's opinion on that, but, but I would say at least at this moment that you could say, make it conditional use. And then the, the planning commission and town council would have some oversight, would be able to see the specific plans, would be able to make sure that the specific site was one that, that was okay to do. I mean, you know, are the balls going to roll into the, to the street, for example? You know, are they going to be, are they going to be hitting cars? All those types of things also need to be maybe discussed tonight as part of.
Room to meet all the setbacks? Those are pretty thin lots.
Right, I haven't been told, I haven't been shown a plat of the particular property. I just know that it's on Stone Road.
And it's our entrance. And I drove down the entrance today, down the street, and I, I was not impressed. And I'm not sure that, that a miniature golf would help with the good impression.
The, according to the letter that they included with it, it says three lots to the east of the museum. So I take that to be the three lots just to the east of the museum. One, one, one which says sold and the other two say for sale. So that's what I, that's what I take it to be, but there's three lots there.
I'll, I'll chime in that I'm not, I'm not opposed to them proceeding with this. And us making that determination. The, the issue that they're going to have to face is the front setback is 80 feet from the center of the right of way or 40% plus or minus the depth of the lot, whichever is less. So they got to realize that they can fit on those three lots and, and still meet these particular requirements. But I'm, I'm all for them proceeding in that particular area for that venue.
Are they allowed to do parking in that setback?
No, they're not.
Well, be careful. I'd, I'd question that because if you go down a couple more lots where we're having that new shop, right, parking is going to occur where, in the front?
That parking occurred because a site plan was not, it occurred before I got here. Site plan was not reviewed in the amount of time that staff has to review them, so they got a free pass.
Okay.
So the one that I did review, which was custom carts, they do have some area in the front. And I'm not saying that they won't display their carts there, but the parking, but I made sure that the parking that was required fits on the sides of the, the building so that there was no parking, so they didn't rely on parking in the front. But they had several parcels. So there is a code requirement that for a site plan that you do need to provide parking and it can't be in the front yard.
Okay, but that's requirement, yes, that's requirements that they would have to come back and show us they can, they can meet.
Or go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get a variance from the parking requirements.
Right.
But our real question here, I think what you're asking us to say is, do we allow miniature golf in C3?
That's, that's it.
That's the question. It's not whether. We have to say for the rest of time, do we want to have miniature golf in a C3 zone?
Right. Correct.
But you have to understand that the C3 is only, goes all the way up to the museum, right past the museum and down to, to the brewery. That's the only C3 in the historic district. There's some C3 over on Bay Creek, over by Bay Creek. That's, that's the only other C3s that are on the zoning map.
Yeah, so it could be over by, by Bay Creek and whatever is zone C3.
I guess my question would be, if not C1, C2, or C3, where would a mini golf fit? Is, is there some other designation?
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Some localities only have it in industrial. But.
In the M2?
Um, light industrial a lot of times, but.
Diane, there'd be a good sand trap there.
Yes, there would.
I don't know that it's allowed in any district that we have. But I would.
It, it would seem that we want to, this is the kind of thing we want to have. It, it would be, it's a very compatible use to tourism in the town. So we've got to figure out where we can put it.
And I, and I agree with you, Ken. Matter of fact, if you look at the zoning ordinance, there's nothing in there about a bowling alley. And so, you know, there, somebody once upon a time said the old Meatland would be a great bowling alley place, you know?
A bowling alley is indoors.
Say that again?
A bowling alley is indoors. That's totally different. You can do whatever you want to the outside to make it blend in. Really hard to make a miniature golf course blend in. And I'm not, I, I can see where it might be nice to have one, but I don't think it's that necessary to our tourism, particularly in that location. I think other locations would work fine, but not there.
Well, I, I kind of disagree with you there because where other location would you put it?
Well, I would put it over where the Rosenwald School is in that area. That's an industrial zone.
In the where?
Over near where the Rosenwald School is somewhere in there. That's industrial zoning and all the way down the street towards the nature preserve. That would be fine. Or along the road that goes to the concrete plant, that would work. It would be fine even as far as I'm concerned in the Harbor District. But I don't like the thought of driving into town and there's a miniature golf course.
Um, there is one issue that maybe I'll bring to your attention as you're thinking this through. Like I just said, let, let's talk about the balls that could be, could go into the road and/or cars being hit. Because I played mini golf before and the balls don't always stay, especially if you're little kids, they don't always stay right there on the green area. So then all of a sudden, there's complaints and people want to do something about it. And so then you see a big, a mesh structure, a mesh.
Net.
Net go up and then how is that going to look? And you won't have any, at least at this moment, you won't have any oversight in that. You could do a couple of things. One, you could say, I believe, and I'm going to have to get the town attorneys, maybe I need to bring this back to you next month because I'm going to have to get the town attorney's opinion on whether you can provide standards such as making sure that a net isn't put up so that the corridor doesn't, does remain, have a pleasing feel as you drive into town. Anything else that anybody might think of that would create a negative effect like the, like lighting, for example? I don't know, I, I haven't thought about all the problems, but maybe planning commission could think of more that might be.
You're not talking about a driving range, are they?
No.
So with a setback and putting, I, I just don't see how you're going to end up. No, I mean, yes, some kid could whack at a ball and it could go that far, but I, I just don't see that as being a real.
So the, the question that I would say, the problem that I would say is that even though there's a setback, I think it says building, maybe it says structure, but is a mini golf as a whole, a green area considered a structure and it's setback of structures, not of use?
Well, if you have to build it, wouldn't it become a structure?
Well, we have a definition of structure. And I, I just, I know this is going to, I know if we tell them that they have to eliminate that, that amount of land, that this issue will arise and the zoning administrator will have to be making a determination. So definition of structure means a combination of materials to form a construction for use, occupancy, or ornamentation without, whether installed on, above, or below the surface of land or water. I, yeah, actually, I do think it fits under that, but I could write a zoning determination while I'm still the zoning administrator so that, that, that stands. If I write one now, nobody can change it, so.
Can I ask you a question? I was just thinking this through in terms of what Diane was talking about in the discussion. Maybe there's concern of as you drive into this historic village that there is a 18-hole putt-putt golf course that you see. Why can't we as a zoning, think about zoning, have the buildings that they're talking about putting closer to the road and the 18-hole behind the building between it and the railroad? Oriented to where you won't even see it when you drive into town. All you see is the building. Is that possible? Yeah.
Is the historic district, are supposed to review the buildings on, in that area? Are they no longer looking at that? There was a time when they were talking about taking them off that.
No, they're still reviewing it.
So we could, we could, if we did something like that, had the building more forward, we could have them build a building that was in keeping with our historic look.
Folks, on, on the list of allowed uses, on the list of allowed uses is boat sales. Get real.
Yeah, now, and just to follow on from that, we got that out of the C1 list, which is the strictest list among the Cs. As you go to C through, C2, you get more permissive. And then C3 means all of C1 and C2 plus anything else that you deem worthwhile. Well, I thought, sure, this would fit somewhere in C1. So from a permissiveness standpoint, I mean, they wanted to be an automobile service station or a repair shop. We couldn't say no because it's a by right use. So I think where, where it fits in terms of their rights is right in the C1 area, which is two steps stricter than C3. So it seems like it ought to be permitted, whether we like it or not. And we can't tell an automobile service station, no, we don't want you to have that coming into town, seeing an automobile service station, it's a by right use.
But, you know, this is why we're rewriting the comprehensive plan and this is why it's too bad we've taken so long. This is all part of land use. Our town has changed since the last time we looked at the zoning map. And it's changed a lot. We are no longer begging people to come into town and opening up businesses. And then we have to maintain the town that people are coming to see. If, if we had a putt-putt golf course and we put it over in industrial and somebody did a big, what do you call it when you hit the golf balls into the big tall nets? You could do that, you could have a basketball court. I mean, it, it makes a lot more sense to me that it would be an area of recreation as opposed to something to do on the main street into town. And I mean, I assume we're going to get busier and we only have one way into town, really. So I don't think we want to junk it up with things that are going to cause traffic like that.
We already have a furniture store.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
And a golf, golf cart repair shop.
Yes.
That looks wonderful.
Broken down, broken down old building.
Excuse me, this is Tom Austin. I'm the one who proposed the mini golf.
Go ahead.
Um, so I completely understand all the concerns about the looks of, of a mini golf there. We fully would want everyone here on the town on board. We do not want an animated, gross color, tacky looking mini golf. We wanted something more muted that goes with the town, some nice landscaping. And, you know, in, in my, that's my personal opinion. The downtown historic area on Mason and the shopping and everything is, is really great. And that as the town grows, I personally, and, and you know, I know there's mixed feelings. I think mini golf or putt-putt golf is, is kind of a staple of a lot of beach towns. But we do not want some large, large scale, like tacky looking anything. I mean, I mean, we want it to look nice and tasteful. And, and I really think it would be a value add to the town. I don't, I don't think it would be a bad thing. I think, I think it would be a very, very good addition to the town.
Thank you. All right. Further discussion. So Alice, Ms. Fincham. So I guess what we need to do here is we need to have a buy, a roll call vote on whether we should, need a, we'll need a motion that.
Bill, can I ask a question?
Sure.
With regards to by right or conditional use permit, what, what I don't want to get in. By right or conditional use permit, what, what I don't want to get into is a blanket approval without seeing something in the future. So a conditional use permit would, would be that vehicle. Is that something that we can impose right now when we discuss this item? I guess I'm asking Allison.
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, you can make it a conditional use permit. I will get, I will get the opinion of the town attorney, but. To the best of my knowledge, instead of a by right use, you can make it a conditional use.
All right, so I'd, I'd make the motion that we agree to proceed with. A golf. Course. Under the condition that it comes back to us under a conditional use permit.
Second.
Well, let me, we're going to discuss it a little bit more. I'm just.
Yeah, now we, we got a, we got a motion in a second. Now we have discussion.
Okay. The letter today from Allison states right in there, if the planning commission. Incurs, there will be allowed by right on any parcel in the C3 district unless the planning commission requires it to be approved. Only on a case-by-case basis by a conditional use permit, and that's what we're going to require right now in this motion. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to, okay.
Further discussion.
So what then is the process? What happens next if we do that?
We vote.
No.
No.
Tonight.
So, so, so it would be just like. We, we, we would, they would have to fill out the application just like any other conditional use permit that we, and we would have a schematic of. Of what the layout is and everything. So. The, the owners there would have to come up with the landscape and, you know, it just. Architect drawing and all, all that. It's.
And, and how they're going to meet all the zoning requirements.
Yeah.
Yep, it has to be.
That's right. That's what I was going to say. They might have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals first. Before they come to you for the conditional use permit or. Vice versa, but they're, they're more than likely going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, if they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and if they give them the approval, does that bind our hands? They've got an approval?
No, no, they will have to get a conditional use permit approved. Through recommendation of the planning commission and then approved by the town council. But. To construct this and of course, as many of you know. Getting a variance on so many different issues. May be problematic, so I would say. They should go to the BZA first to see if it's even possible.
Well, they, they got to lay out on, on a piece of paper what they're proposing and determine where it stacks up against zoning.
Exactly. That's the first step is for them to do that.
And that means then they don't come to us, they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, then we are the next step.
Well, if it is, it will go to the zoning administrator. And that person will determine whether it meets zoning requirements. And if it doesn't, and they want to continue to proceed, they go to the, the Board of Appeals.
Right.
Right, right.
So. We could still, we still have a motion on the table in a second. Any more discussion?
Let's vote on that motion.
All right, so I need a roll call vote.
McCoy, yes.
Move, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Holloway, yes.
I have no idea what we're voting on. Are we voting?
Ah, wait a minute. We heard everything you heard.
Now, listen, I'm asking you this. Are we voting that the conditional use permit is coming to us at our next meeting? Or are we voting that it goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals based on the recommendation of our zoning administrator?
No. No, you're just voting to concur with the zoning administrator that miniature golf. Be allowed by conditional use permit in the C3 zoning district.
So we're not approving anything that this person wants to do. We're just saying, we're just saying that the policy. Will be if you want mini golf, you have to go through a conditional use permit.
Yep.
So you, okay, so let's make sure you all know what you're voting on then. So you all are saying you think it's okay to have mini golf in C3. Everybody agrees that that's okay?
At a conception.
Yes, we just voted that way.
But you know, we have this, we have this habit of voting without. Restating what we're voting on and I'm not always positive. We're all voting on the same thing. Because we've had a big, long discussion about it. So I'm just making sure you all are saying that you want to put, that you want to make it okay to put miniature golf in a C3 zone. Is that what you're voting on?
That was the most.
Yes.
Then I'm against it.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so it, it passed. Okay, so. All right. Next item is, is a comprehensive plan update discussion. Uh, I asked this to be put on the, on the agenda as that. You've seen the emails back and forth with. To you all and with John Hosey in there. About meetings. Personally, I think we can do, if we, if we can do a Zoom meeting, we should continue the work sessions. The work sessions were scheduled for Tuesdays, the third Tuesday of the month. I mean, we're, we're getting behind the power curve here on our comp plan, so.
I, I understand what you're saying, Bill, but what, what do we do about recording what we, what's, what was decided? Go ahead.
I think, I think. You know. If they can't allow us to have Tracy for two hours from three to five. One, one time a month, you know, then, then.
That's fair. That's fair. Okay. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So.
Excuse me, can I speak?
Sure.
I think people get under the impression that. It's just the meeting. It's not. It's the preparation. It's also the minutes. I mean, there's a lot to meetings and this isn't the only board I have. I have the Board of Zoning Appeals. I have Historic District Review Board. I have the Wetlands Coastal and Dune Board. The Harbor Area Review Board if they ever meet. They haven't. I've been very lucky that they have not met. But I think people are under the impression that. We just sit at meetings. It's not. It's other things also that just prep before meetings and after meetings.
And I, I, but I believe John has already stated. That. It is impractical. At this point in time. For. Staff. To provide services for work sessions until the new planner is in place.
And when will that be? How many planners have we been through since I've been in this town six years? We have the world's most fabulous zoning administrator right now and she's leaving us. And we're not going to get anybody any good. We're not. We're not going to get anybody with the knowledge she has. So we're going to sit back, do absolutely nothing. Let the town council make all these decisions on things we should be recommending or not recommending based on the comprehensive plan. What do we have to talk about on Saturday and Sunday? All I have is a giant pot, and I mean a giant pile of papers. Where everything that I have worked on has totally changed from the time I started working on it till today. Now, we either have to decide we're going to do the comprehensive plan. We have to go to. Uh, our town manager and say, tough, you figure it out. And if Libby has to be our clerk, then Libby is our clerk. None of this bullshit. We are the ones who are doing the work. The town staff is supporting us.
Diane, how much is Bill paying you?
Yeah, I wish somebody was.
Well, no, I understand. I understand.
I mean, we've already had a big, we had a big hiatus. And then, you know, we're having another hiatus and like Diane said, we're not doing, we're not getting anything accomplished. Yeah, you guys can do your work, but.
Doesn't stand because of the time. It's taken so.
No, that's right. It takes, it's taken time, you know, it's just like, there is a requirement that you have to have so many. So many planning commission meetings too, right?
Yep.
You know, you just, just can't have them. But that's all right.
Would like to be our person who takes our minutes. He can help, maybe the mayor would like to fill in.
So I, I would assume that if, if this is all this thing, we, we don't need to have a, a harbor area. Uh, I mean, a historic district review board. It's the same thing. I mean, you know, where, where are the priorities? I understand that. But if that's, if that's what he wants to do. Uh, you know, he's the town manager, so he has.
For us. He works for us. We don't work for him.
No, he, he, he works, no. Now, listen, he works, you'd, you'd got to remember. Diane, the town manager works at the pleasure of the town council.
Oh, so the town council doesn't want us to have these meetings?
Well, that, that's a good, good, good question. We have a, a town council representative on the board just for that, so maybe he can take it back to the town council and find out. Why can't we have work sessions on the comp plan?
Maybe he knows right now. Paul?
No, it's the same information that you've been given. There's town priorities and, and they can't make staff available. According to what they've got. And, and save, save the question then for Saturday.
That's a good question. That's a good point.
Yep.
Yeah, you were going to talk about priorities. Why don't you save it and bring it up on Saturday?
Right. Good point. Very good point, Paul. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Paul.
All right.
Going back to Saturday, to Saturday, what? What are we talking about?
I haven't seen.
About the plan, but what are we saying?
This isn't on the agenda.
Correct.
This, this is the.
No, Saturday's meeting is not on the agenda.
It says comprehensive plan update discussion.
Yes. Not about Saturday's meeting.
Saturday's meeting is not about the comp plan. The comp plan will be probably talked about there, but it's not, that's not the main focus.
Bill, there may have been a section that the person who was in this position prior to my coming on board. Uh, was working on. I don't have a particular section assigned to me, so I'm willing to help out somebody who needs. Some assistance. Just let me know what you need me to do.
Okay. I'm sure that. We, we can work that out. I, I'm sure that there's one of the commissioners here that might need some help. On my screen, he's like, he's right below you and he's got, he's wearing a mask. Can you use some help, Mr. Holloway?
Are you kidding?
Yes, he has, he has land use, so. That's both current and future. All right, okay. I don't want to beat a dead horse to death anymore, so.
Oh, whip, we can try and beat a dead horse.
Yeah, well. I, it will be brought up. I, I will mention, I will talk, if we have to, if we have to talk to him again on Saturday offline, I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to John and see, see where it goes because, you know. I mean, we're not asking for a lot. Okay. I mean, it may be a lot for the, for them, but you know, okay, I understand, but. So, all right. That said. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion. We adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor?
McCoy, yes.
Beauty, yes.
Did everybody say yes? Holloway, did you say yes? Okay.
I did, I did.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, all.